Some feedback now. All right, it is 7:30. We'd like to welcome everybody to the Mesa City Council meeting for April the 23rd. The first item on our agenda is to hear a presentation, discuss and provide final funding direct. I should have noted that all of our council was present. I see them on our Zoom screen. Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. First agenda item is to hear a presentation, discuss and provide final funding recommendations for fiscal year 20 and 21, and provide years available funding and prior years available funding for community development block grant, also known as CDBG, home investment partnerships, emergency solutions grants, and human services programs. I know a lot of work has gone into this. I know there's been council committee meetings and community meetings scrutinizing these proposals. So, thank you to everyone who's gotten this, these funding recommendations this far. Mr. Brady, who will be presenting on this?
Thank you, Mayor. We have Michelle here with us today. Well, I'm going to ask her, because I know there's a lot of dollars and a lot of pots of dollars that keep coming to council and we keep discussing, but maybe to have her give us a quick overview of these, this pot of dollars, where it originates from, and then talking about the future stimulus cares, HUD dollars we'll be getting in the future so we can be clear about kind of the flow of, or the different pots of funds that are coming to council, because we're going to be talking about a variety of dollars that are available to Mesa over the next few weeks. So, maybe I'll just have her first, at the beginning of her presentation, just give you an overview of the different opportunities coming to Mesa with federal funds. Michelle?
Good morning, Mayor Giles, members of the city council. Thank you for having me here this morning. Today, I'm here before you to present on the annual funding recommendations, and as Mr. Brady mentioned, we do have some different pots of money coming down with the stimulus funds. So, the specific dollars that I'm going to be presenting to you today are through our normal annual funding process where the city gets allocations on an annual basis through CDBG home and emergency solutions grant, as well as we have our little bucket of human services dollars. We'll be bringing to you in the next couple of weeks recommendations and have discussion on different activities that we could fund with the stimulus funds. So, we will have emergency solutions grants and CDBG, additional CDBG dollars that will be coming directly from the COVID stimulus funds, and we're calling those ESG CV, so we know we're calling those the COVID money, as well as the CDBG CV. So, we will be bringing to you next Thursday for the study session, the ESG CV funds. So, if you have any questions as we're going through this presentation, I'd be happy to answer that, but I just wanted to mention that this is our annual process that we do every year for those regular dollars. Just a little bit of history, the city of Mesa has participated in the federal programs for over 43 years. We've had the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnership Program, and our Emergency Solutions Grant. These funds are provided by HUD, and the substantial investment that we have provided into the community benefits many residents, significantly improving their lives, as well as revitalizing neighborhoods and preserving neighborhoods. These federal programs fund a variety of activities, including capital improvements, housing, public services, homeless assistance, emergency shelter, transitional housing, and neighborhood improvements. And as I mentioned previously, the city does use an annual application process, which takes us about eight to nine months to go through to solicit to nonprofit organizations to provide different proposals for eligible uses of these funds. We start out with an applicant orientation for those agencies, and that was done on November 21st, 2019. We then take the applications that are provided from the nonprofits and staff review those applications for eligibility, and also score them, as well as the Housing and Community Development Advisory Board. Those scores are then taken as an average, and that's how those agencies are ranked in order of their scoring, and then the funding is allocated proportion to the score. So, that just provides a little bit of background on how this annual process works. So, as I mentioned before, it's for the Community Development Block Grant Program, our Home Investment Partnership Program, Emergency Solutions Grant, and our Human Services Funding. And when we go through this application process, it's really to, to put forth what the city's priorities are, how we are going to address those priorities in the community, and also to make sure that those, those agencies are providing services that will meet the council's strategic priorities. So, as you can imagine, every year, those may change. And also, we have to make sure that these funds are used in consistency with our HUD five-year consolidated plan, which we're in the middle of finishing right now, which we'll be bringing to you here in a couple of weeks. I wanted to just mention that at the beginning of the funding process, this year's focus and priority set by council and, and the city was really address homelessness. I know with the COVID crisis that we have a little shift in priority, but I'll talk about that as we go through on how we're addressing that with some of those funds. So, I'll give you a quick overview of the funding that we have available for each funding source. For our Community Development Block Grant Program, we have a total of just over $6 million, and that is comprised of our fiscal year 2021 allocation, which is $4 million, just a little over $4 million. And then we have reprogrammed funds of 1.9 million. And what reprogrammed funds are, is if we have funds that were allocated to a previous contract, and for one reason or another, the funds weren't either expended or fully expended, or we get program income from the generation of some activities. Those become reprogrammed funds into the next funding cycle. For our Home Investment Partnership Program, we have just over $1.7 million, which is comprised of our allocation of 1.5 million and reprogrammed funds of 239,000. For our Emergency Solutions Grant, we have an allocation of 327,000, and for Human Services Program this year, we have an allocation of 570,000 to direct services. What I'd like to do is give you just a quick overview of how many applications were received for each funding source, the amount of funds we have available, and what those funding request totals were. As you can see, we get quite a few requests over the amount of money that we have available, and that is probably going to increase over the next year or so when we see this crisis with COVID continue. So, for our CDBG Public Services, and what those dollars are, are dollars that would go to services such as meals on wheels or educational services, so direct client services. We have 627,000 that's set aside for that pot. So, with CDBG, we are required not to spend any more than 15% of our public service dollars of the entire allocation. We had nine applications that were received for total funding requests over just $1 million. So, our non-public services for CDBG, that's our second bucket of money with CDBG, we have 400, the $4 million plus our 813, which is allocated for our administration, so that's always 20% of our grant, which leaves $6 million to be allocated. Funding requests were over almost 6 million, so 5.9 million, and we received 11 applications. For the home program, again, we have 1.7 million, have funding requests of over 2 million with five applications. That one, we usually get larger dollar applications because those funds can be used for development of housing, renovation of rental housing, and also for tenant-based rental assistance, which is rent and utility deposit. For Emergency Solutions Grants, we had four applications totaling 455,000. And Human Services, I would say this is another one of the funding sources that we get quite a bit of competition in, because it has a variety of services and eligibility criteria that you can, you can apply for. So, the funding requests were just over a million with 39 applications. So, as you can see on the screen, we have our agencies that are recommended for funding, and this is for our CDBG Public Services. You'll see the name of the agency, the name of their program under the first column, and then a slight program description and the amount that has been funded. I won't go through every single one with the details of the program descriptions, but we are funding services that include homeless navigation services, so that we're reaching out into the community and really taking an intensive targeted approach to connecting homeless individuals to resources and supporting services and trying to get them housed. And we are also going to be funding supportive services at a couple of different shelters within the community of Mesa. We have a family shelter for La Masita and Desert Leaf Apartments, which is our permanent supportive housing. And then, of course, emergency shelter, which we know is, is a definite need in our community, and that would provide basic needs, essential services at the East Valley Men's Center and La Masita. And then we do fund CAS for their emergency shelter and basic needs as well, and that's at the Homeless Services Campus. For our Housing and Public Facilities projects, and I like to call this money kind of our bricks and mortar bucket of money, because these are, these dollars, 60% of our allocation is used for housing rehabilitation projects, any type of acquisition rehabilitation of facilities, facility-type improvements, and also any type of public facilities or public infrastructure, infrastructure improvements. So, through this slide, you'll notice that we are looking at funding Housing Rehabilitation Program, which is an ongoing program here in the city, which funds homeowner rehab, emergency repair and roofing programs. Love Your Neighborhood, which as we refer to as the LIN program, which is a concentrated housing rehabilitation program, really designed to do improvements in a designated neighborhood to have a really big impact. Also going to be funding a couple of facility improvements for nonprofits, renovation of restrooms at East Valley Men's Center, as well as an HBAC replacement project at Boys and Girls Club. For our Home Investment Partnership Program, and again, this is all related to housing-specific activities, and as I mentioned earlier, that with the crisis of COVID, we have decided to fund a deposit utility assistance program for homeless prevention, which would include rent and utility assistance for low-income residents. And those are individuals who are already in their housing, and maybe they've currently lost their job due to COVID, and they're having just a little bit of struggle making ends meet, and so that additional rent and utility would definitely help. Our down payment-
Excuse me, Michelle. Mr. Freeman has a question for you.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Usually, I try to wait till the end, but could you go back one slide, please?
Absolutely.
So, on the City Mesa Homeless Service Project, can you define funding to support regional shelter solutions, $1.5 million? And where that, where that's targeted?
Absolutely. Mayor Giles, members of the city council. So, we, at the direction of the city manager's office, as a high priority for the city, we have set aside $1.5 million to address a homeless service project. Has not been specifically defined at this point, but it would provide funding opportunity to support any regional shelter solutions, which could include partnering with other jurisdictions, and providing long-term housing as well. So, it could be transitional, that would turn into permanent supportive housing. And so, once again, we haven't specifically defined what that's going to be, but we know that we do need to think about some solutions on a regional approach for homeless.
So, Mayor and city council, this is a, we've asked these dollars to be set aside. There's been a lot of, there's been quite a bit of conversation about pulling together a regional approach to dealing with the homeless challenge. Right now, the city of Mesa, and Mayor can speak to this also, because he's certainly doing on his end with the mayors, but we're also having conversations at the city manager level, where at least for now, there's active conversations between the city of Phoenix, the city of Tempe, and the city of Mesa to join together to find some regional solutions as we try to find a way to meet the challenge related to homelessness. So, we've been, we've set aside a specific dollar amount, the three, as three communities continue to have a conversation, we're still, we were having significant conversations about the possibility of combining our resources together, or looking at coordinating our efforts together to address homelessness on a regional basis. That somewhat got interrupted by the pandemic, but there are still undergoing conversations. But what we've committed to in our partnership with those groups is to set aside some dollars so that it'll give us some time to formulate some solutions. We're already in some conversations with New Leaf about some possibilities near their campus in La Masita, so that it's near the Tempe border, so that there's a possibility of some collaboration there. Tempe's looking at some properties they have and some program initiatives they have that we may also participate in. So, we're all trying to go down this path, but trying, we're recognizing that together that three of us can find, are trying to find some solutions. At the same time, I think, and I'll let the mayor speak to this, we're trying to find, what's the right word, Mayor? Encouragement to get other communities to join in with us on this valley-wide effort. But at first, at this point, the most active conversations are taking place between Phoenix, Tempe, and Mesa.
Chris, can I, my comment is, is I think we need to be careful about over-concentration of any type of shelter specifically, and I'll speak for my district. However, I would entertain having other communities, Chandler, Gilbert, if they would come to the table and help participate. I just think that's just why spreading it out within our regionally, when you talk regional, well, regional, yeah, Phoenix is very large, Mesa is very large. However, spreading it out will help probably some of the issues in our community that we have in, in the west side. So, that'd be my comment on that, and so, thank you. That's, I guess that's my thought process there, Mayor, if you want to add something.
Yes, thank you. As Mr. Brady indicated there, prior to the COVID issue kind of taking over our agenda, there was a lot of conversation of Mayor Gallego, and Phoenix, as you know, has been supportive of expanding the CAS shelter in downtown Phoenix, and that, there was a lot of political pushback on that. Can imagine that the council in Phoenix and the folks in downtown Phoenix, even more than Mesa, you know, resents carrying more than their share of the burden, and so expanding that facility was, you know, problematic. And Mayor Gallego has been outspoken in asking other communities to rise to the challenge of doing more of their share. That's a similar message, you know, in Mesa. We've heard the statistics of how Mesa is doing more than its share as well when it comes to providing services. But for us to have a, so we still need to have a very frank conversation with our regional partners and invite them to participate in having facilities and services more so than they are now, and that's going to require expanding the capacity in the region. There's, I know Councilmember Duff has had some great conversations with our counterparts in Tempe, and there's a real, they're about to do some very significant things in increasing capacity and facilities. So, we need to, that $1.5 million is, is not going to do much in terms of expanding facilities, but it gives us a little bit of seed money to start the conversation when we are talking with our regional partners about what we could do to be a party to something like that. So, there is no, no location that's earmarked for this, there is no partnership with another community that's, that's earmarked for this money, but we do know that our, regionally, our capacity is not what it needs to be. We need to be part of a regional effort to expand that capacity, and so this money is kind of a down payment on that, that process. Certainly, I think there's, there's broad agreement that the capacity needs to be expanded. Siting additional facilities is going to be a real challenge. No community, I think, is going to, to, you know, without question to say, yes, please, let's, let's build more homeless facilities. Every neighborhood is going to, you know, want to be a part of that discussion. And at this point, we're not tackling that issue. That's going to be a difficult and complicated issue. But setting aside a little bit of money just so that we can be a party to those conversations, I think it's a good start. Jeremy?
Quick question. I believe in one of our previous presentations, or I'm not sure where I saw it, but does anybody have a copy of that spreadsheet that shows the homeless population count in time by city? Was that a presentation that we got last week? Is that, is that available?
Yeah, I think we've seen that many times. So, yeah, that, that information is, I'm sure staff can send that to you pretty quickly. Just showing the regional results of the most recent point in time count?
Right. Yeah, I was just trying to get a grasp of, you know, how much Mesa, when you say, you know, Phoenix has done more than their share, I'm just, I just believe the number was much higher in Phoenix. I just wanted to see those numbers. So, if somebody has that report, if they could just email it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see if we can get that link for it.
Thank you.
And I would, I would just, on that topic, I think that some of our, our regional neighbors use the point in time count to say, hey, why are you talking to me? You know, our numbers quadrupled, we went from two to four, or we went from, you know, then, and that's because they're just not providing services. Yet, yes, they do have very low point in time counts, but that's because they're, all of their homeless people are coming to Mesa and Phoenix. So, that, that can be a little bit of a misleading count. Michelle, I think we, you were still doing your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Giles, members of the council. I believe that I have completed this slide. If there's not any questions, I can move on to the next one. For our Emergency Solutions Grant, with this grant, we are limited to 60% of the allocation to provide homeless shelter operations, so we need to take that into consideration when we make our recommendations. And so, we'll be funding three particular agencies here to address homelessness or homeless prevention. We have homeless shelter operations for East Valley Men's Shelter and La Masita, as well as emergency to permanent supportive housing for homeless, and that's with partnership between Save the Family and Southwest Lutheran Social Services. We call that rapid rehousing. And then Victim Services Program for individuals, victims of domestic violence at Chrisless Shelter. Okay, and our last funding source is our Human Services Funding. And again, one of the focuses and priorities this year was for homelessness, and recently with the COVID crisis, one of the concerns is food security and making sure that individuals have adequate food, which includes adults and children. So, you'll see on one of the slides here, we will be funding an agency, Arizona Brain Food, for the Kids Backpack Program, so that the children have food on the weekends. In this pot of money here, we are also providing homeless prevention, emergency rent and mortgage utility assistance, and again, this is also to address some of the needs with COVID. Some basic services in the community for providing meals, clothing, resources, and referrals to homeless individuals, as well as Teen Lifeline for 24-hour confidential crisis hotline for teens and education and prevention services. So, on this slide, we have most of our food programs, United Food Bank, ASTER Aging, which is formerly East Valley Adult Resources, they provide the Meals on Wheels program, and then the Arizona Brain Food Weekend Bags that I had mentioned previously. Those are all three of the food programs that we feel are very necessary right now, especially in light of COVID. And then also Housing and Supportive Services for families in crisis through House of Refuge, and the Mesa United Way Vita Program, which is the volunteer tax program that offers free tax services for low-income individuals.
Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman has a question.
Absolutely.
Hi, Michelle. I've got some more questions. However, on the United Food Bank, you know, there's been a, they've been serving a lot of meals, and I just asked my colleagues that, to maybe reconsider some of the funding mechanisms for the United Food Bank, because it's not going to get any better. I sit on some state agricultural boards, and we're learning nationally that the food supply within the agricultural chain, not that it's compromised, but it's pushed back because of the COVID and the packing houses that produce all the meat for, for the United States and others. There's going to be a timeline where some of that's not going to be available. And consequently, that's, the food banks are not getting the food that they typically get, because the grocery stores don't have the inventory, and it's not that it's out of date, but it reaches its shelf limit, and then it's, it's given to a food bank. So, I'd like to see some more funding for our food bank, and especially United. They do a great service, and you can know that their service is delivering. I saw the statistics, they went from just a few hundred meals being delivered to thousands and even more coming up. So, something to consider, some additional funding. Michelle, is that possible? Redirecting some additional funds to the United Food Bank?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Freeman, if you'll let, once Michelle finishes, we're going to present to you a very significant program for food security that will include significant resources that we're going to be dedicating to our food banks in Mesa. So, that is the second presentation we're going to give you today. I think you're going to see that we're going to provide a significant amount of resources in that area with the stimulus dollars we've just received.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Keep me on track.
Mayor Giles, members of the city council. Also, in the Human Services Funding, we have a recent development, recent application for Mesa Promise, and this was at the interest of some council members, as well as administrative dollars set aside for any possible audit finding payback.
So, Mayor and council, if you recall, these dollars we're talking about here, these are general fund dollars. So, they're the easiest for us to administer without the federal regulations. So, we have, we had 100, we've identified, we had identified 150,000 on top of this. We usually set aside a little over $700,000 for this program. $100,000 will help us deal with some administrative issues that we need to reconcile with HUD. But also, we had, through working with some programming, moving some cost over to the stimulus dollars we're going to present to you, we have $50,000 that we would recommend helping to fund the Mesa Promise Program. Initially, we were not, we weren't sure if that was going to come out of this program or just come out of a general fund allocation, but recognizing now that our general fund is going to be pretty much a flat budget with probably some reductions, we're recommending that the Promise Program at $50,000 be, will be also included as this part of this recommendation. So, we, those funding, those funds are available in the general fund for that purpose.
On that point, it does, I personally appreciate that, but I think in this large allocations that we're approving today, there, a lot of it is going to human service agencies, and a lot of the efforts and energies of human service agencies are going to be geared towards causes that are closely tied to COVID. I just wonder, is there, and we're also have, have the challenge of taking full advantage of the $90 million that's sitting in our bank account right now. Is, I appreciate the fact that we've scrubbed $50,000 out of these allocations that could correct, more than correctly be allocated to COVID. Is there, is there more that can be scrubbed, you know, from, from this budget into that, freeing up even more money for other human service allocations?
Mayor, just looking at it, based on the guidance we got late yesterday afternoon, I think those items, and I'm just scanning this, that are most related to food would probably be the ones that we could probably also fund with the cares dollars. So, whether it's the, again, we're going to be providing significant resources to United Food Bank, but there's $30,000 there. There's the ASTER Aging, I guess that might be also eligible for another $30,000, and the Arizona Brain Food. Those would, I could see that those could be likely administered to under the federal dollars. administered to under the federal dollars that we're receiving, so that would free up another $85,000?
You know, I would, I know that this is on our agenda as an action item, and maybe we, hopefully we can still proceed with approving these allocations. But if we could do it with the caveat that if it's appropriate, we can move maybe those $85,000 tied to food security to the Mesa CARES budget. $85,000 is a significant amount that we could reallocate to human service agencies. That would be a real blessing to them.
Right. I guess, Mayor, the question is, what services are we referring to? Because of, again, if it's, I'm not sure, there was an application process, I guess is what I'm saying. And so there was, we've gone through the vetting of selecting, ranking and selecting agencies. So I'm not sure what we end up doing with the $80,000 that could get the dollars out the door quicker. All of these groups are going to receive additional funds on top of these. So I think we would, I, the only thing I'm concerned about is, the process is very important and part of these allocations and distributions. So we could do that, but it doesn't necessarily, I guess because of general fund dollars, we could just specifically give them to agencies, but sometimes that's problematic if there's not an outline process that they all get to compete for. Unless there's something specific, a specific type of program that the council is interested in these dollars going to. Otherwise, these are dollars on top of dollars that we'll be able to provide to these same groups.
And I know this is a complicated, you know, combination of different money that needs to be spent in specific ways and on specific timelines. So I know it's a, it's a real game of Tetris to move this money, you know, around inside this budget. But the Mesa College Promise Program, for example, that's starting, you know, fall of 2021, I think we could certainly spend more, allocate more money to that program. Now, that, putting money, you know, aside for a year to start that program, I'm sure would not, is not what HUD wants us to do, so we couldn't use those dollars. So I just don't know to what extent that money is, you know, can be moved around. But it, I, if there's just folks who understand the process that can look at it and see if we can park, well, maybe not even park. I assume there's several agencies that got less than they asked for. And I just wonder if we could go back and maybe more fully fund some of these proposals because of the, by shifting money over to the CARES budget. I know Frankie had, Frankie was the chairman of the committee that did this, so if you have something to add to that.
Yeah. And I don't have the list with me, but I know there's, there was over 1.1 million asked, Michelle, and staff, on the human services funding. And I know there is a ranking of the organizations that submitted applications, maybe looking at some of those rankings of folks that, alluding to what the mayor is saying, sometimes we don't allocate the full funds that they ask for, but maybe just on the human services front, looking at the amounts, and then also the other organizations that were just missed out on funding.
I think Councilmember Duff may have the larger list of what everybody asked for, right? You're on mute, Councilmember Duff.
Yeah, I have a long spreadsheet, which we won't be able to read from here, but I do agree with the point of even within the awards, there's monies, you know, most everybody was awarded, there were some that were awarded after asked, but then there's a whole long list. And a lot has changed since the COVID. And so I'd like to relook at that, like you said, to shift what we can under the CARES dollars, so that we can make some more impact in these other human services. I have, you know, I know we have our priorities and our rating system, our ranking systems, but another priority we have that we didn't have the time that we did this rankings is in economic development workforce, things like that. I know we'll be doing some things under CARES, but, and there's a variety of places. I'd just like to have some time to relook at it, or if staff would like to make recommendations and how we can allocate our dollars wisely between this and CARES to make sure we're covering our community as much as possible at this critical time.
Mr. Brady, Michelle, what does the timing look like on this? And I know there's a lot of work that has gone into getting it to this point, but as...
Mayor, this item, because human services funding is general fund dollars. So that's your council's discretion when you want to outmake that allocation. We've, you know, obviously, we've gone through a process in soliciting proposals from nonprofits with specific kind of guidance in mind. I mean, we could reject all these proposals and restart again under a new process with new objectives and goals for the nonprofits to consider, and we could then also work with the agencies that have identified food. I mean, they're already, many of these are going to be receiving funds anyway on top of this. But we could, we could pull those out and then restart the process again if council wants to give us direction on prioritization of programming. Sometimes what happens is, as we staff balance these out, because sometimes these agencies will apply in both buckets, and the CDVG buckets and the human services funding. And sometimes it's easier for us recognizing, especially if it's a smaller agency that doesn't have as much capacity, we won't fund them under CDVG, because we know that that could be problematic for them. We'll put them over here in human services funding. And they recognize that's a little bit lower bar, as far as the regulations and the bureaucracy and the quickness of they getting those dollars. But if it's council's pleasure, we can just, we do need to move forward with the others, because we've got to get those per, the timelines have been set out by HUD. We need to get those moving today. But the human services funding, we can set those aside and come back with other proposals and thoughts and new processes for those allocations.
Mr. Luna?
So Mayor, I would suggest that we go ahead and move forward with the CDVG funding for both public services, housing and public facilities, the investment partnership program, and the ESG, because we do have time constraints on that. I think the human, the service funding, we can reevaluate that. I think I would suggest to Mr. Brady to see if there's a possibility of factoring that with some of the new COVID dollars that we are going to be receiving, or we have received, to support some of these programs. Again, we have a little bit more flexibility with our human service funding, so I think we need to reevaluate that, relook at that, and then make recommendations in the future. That would be my suggestion.
And I agree entirely with that. I think the last thing we want to do is slow down the CDVG process. That's complicated. But I guess my question is that on, do we have food insecurity dollars coming out of CDVG, going to fund some of these agencies, that maybe we could increase, you know, the CDVG allocation to those agencies, and slide those food insecurity dollars over to COVID, and then just have more money to spread around?
Mayor?
Yes, Michelle. I know we've got a couple more council members with questions, but if you could respond to that one, then we'll go on to these other questions.
So, Mayor, I think I'm looking, remember, under the current CDVG, the program is limited under public service to the 15% cap. And so that, those are the projects that are...
Did I hit that that cap might be lifted as a result of COVID?
Well, that's the next round of dollars. It's the ones, not the ones we're talking about today.
Okay.
So today, these are the ones that are still under the 15% cap. So I think, I don't know what slide number this is, but it's CDVG Public Services. And everything I see there is related to, you know, navigation services, homeless services, wraparound services. So I don't see anything specific that says, I mean, and, you know, some of these, the guidance we have, we can take the dollars from the 90 million, we could spend it, as long as it's related to COVID and providing separation for homeless, they could be included. But I, none of that was really known by these agencies and these proposals before us today. So while they help homeless, I don't know that they meet the specific intentions that are, that are outlined in the guidance that we have today. We'd have to spend some time. Again, I'd hate to hold up this group of CDVG applicants, because the process has been going on for months, and this is the very end of that process. And so, and some of these are not nearly as apparent that they would be eligible under the stimulus dollars. Certainly, the dollars related to, and we would have to go through another, HUD would require us to go through a specific process to reallocate those dollars. We'd have to go back and advertise, and so these dollars wouldn't be readily available to any of these agencies, even if we removed, decided to read, to adjust these, because we're on a very prescribed kind of timeline that's put out by the federal government. On the, that's why I think the greatest flexibility we have is the human services funding. If we want to set that aside and restart that process with asking agencies to propose on items that are not going to be covered by stimulus, but we might think are impactful to our community, we can do that.
Well, I agree with what you're saying, Mr. Brady, which is, we don't want to derail the CDVG process that we're at the end of right now. But I am intrigued by the idea of maybe doing a little more scrubbing with human service dollars, maybe taking out the food insecurity awards, knowing that those are going to be more than well taken care of out of the Mesa CARES dollars. And I don't know, I don't want to restart the process of evaluating everything all over again, but I think there are some council funding priorities that we could ship some of that money to. And at the end of the day, in December, you know, we might still have a lot of Mesa CARES money that we just can't use other places, or we're dramatically, we're desperately looking for places. But right now, I mean, if there's, the idea that there's $85,000 that could possibly be reallocated to other priorities isn't very attractive. I know we had some, another, some other council member, Mr. Thompson, I know you had your hand up, and then Councilmember Duff.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to go back to the, to the home funds and talk about Pepper Place. That's, that's affordable housing that we've basically owned for 15 years. And there's, what, four units, or six units in a home, in a single-family house. And over that 15-year timeframe, we've only rehabbed four houses, and we've only rented two. But yet, we talk about there's a need out there to house folks. And so I struggle with putting, I'm trying to decide whether it's putting good money after bad, or what exactly is going on with Pepper Place, and the fact that for 15 years, we've, we've had the property, and we've only rented two of the units. Two are still available to be rented, two are dilapidated, as well as the single-family home, and have to be rehabbed with quite a bit of CDVG dollars. And so we continue to fund, to maintain, upkeep, and try to rehab these units, but we're not renting them. And so if, you know, I'm of the opinion that, you know, if we're not going to rehab them, and we're not going to rent them, then we should probably get them off of our books and get out from under them and give them to, or sell them to a nonprofit that wants to rehab them and take care of them. Because they're, you know, it's, we continue to spend money on them. They're not generating enough revenue from the rents to even put back into the houses themselves for any repairs, because they have to be maintained as affordable housing. So I'm just, I'm a little perplexed on the Pepper Place housing of what we intend to do long-term, because 15 years is long-term to me, and we haven't really done a whole lot, and just continue to throw more money at it. So just my opinion, for what it's worth.
I know there's a long story attached to Pepper Place, and we've been trying to get out of, I think we've actually been trying to get out of owning Pepper Place for quite a while. Chris, Natalie, or somebody available to just comment on the...
Yeah, this, I, I'm, this is not, I'm not, I can't speak to this. So I don't know, Natalie or Michelle, do you want to talk it? Michelle's going to give it a try. She's hasn't been here very long, but maybe she knows more than I do. I'm sure she does. Go ahead, Michelle.
Mayor Giles, members of the council, I think I might know a little bit, just to be dangerous. But in consultation with staff, there's, there is some long history with this property. Originally, funds were provided to a nonprofit, Community Services of Arizona. And unfortunately, that nonprofit is no longer in business. And so when we invest home funds or CDVG funds into a property, we are required to maintain it as its intended use for a certain period of time. And typically, with the home funds, with the amount that was invested, it would be 20 years. And so when CSA went out of business, we called the note on the property, and therefore, the city now owns the property. That was in approximately 2014 that that happened. And so in order to maintain the property as its original use for affordable housing, the city has gone in and started to renovate portion of the property, because the condition was completely uninhabitable when CSA left the property. So at this point, there have been more units that were leased throughout the years, but currently, there's two units that are leased. And if we want to continue to offer affordable housing as its intended use for that property, we would need to bring it up to compliance, you know, so that it is habitable, and we can go ahead and lease it out. If we decided that that was not the option we wanted to do, if we do sell the property or use it for a different use, we would have to pay the original investment back to the home program.
So the choice would be either we're doing this, or we sell it to a nonprofit, who would coming back and requesting most likely the same amount of dollars to continue the rehab program. So that's, the commitment was made years ago, and we're, I guess, we're kind of in this business for the next, how many more years do you think we have?
I can follow up with that, but given that it was purchased in 2005...
So we have...
We probably have another five years.
Five years or so, yeah.
And again, I can, I can confirm that. I'm guessing that it's 20 years, because that's the typical minimum for that amount of investment, but it could be more if the city put more restrictions on that.
Okay, thank you. I know Councilmember Duff had a question.
A couple of comments. First of all, on the Pepper Place, I hate to mix it up, because I know we need to get through this, but a consideration, whether now or later, is, I know there's a New Leaf property for, a shelter for domestic violence, that New Leaf has, that they've asked to, that we transfer it into their ownership, and there is some economic development asked for that same property. And would it be a consideration even taking this Pepper Place rehabilitation, making it the domestic violence shelter that New Leaf makes after it's rehabilitated, and then sell this other piece of property that has economic development interests, and wanting, you know, a builder or a business to buy it and use it as an addendum to their business next door? Just a consideration on how to use the property. I don't want to get in the way of the CDGB, because I know we're under deadlines and stuff like that, but I'm just putting that out there, whether it would be a consideration at some point. The point I wanted to make about the human service dollars is, given what we know now because of the pandemic, can we take some of these dollars that we can transfer, the 80,000 or so, that we can transfer to the CARE dollars, and use those in the Promise Program? Why the Promise Program is, the demand is going to be even greater now. We're all going to find people who can't afford to go to college, and even those service, the hourly worker, is a great opportunity for them to upskill in order to get the better jobs, and because there's a lot of people who will be displaced for a long period of time that are in service-related jobs. And if they can use that time and have that opportunity... And if they can use that time and have that opportunity through what we can create in a collaborative effort through businesses and philanthropy and the city to transition those people into better paying jobs, it's a good time to do that. Also because of the educational aspect, we don't have to go back out and re-rank and reevaluate all the human services of homelessness and students and seniors and stuff like that. It's kind of, it's in its own bucket, education. This is something, an opportunity I think we could really use to kick off our Promise Program. There's a lot of interest in businesses supporting this even with the COVID going on because they recognize the opportunities in educating, upskilling, and transitioning their workforce to be more effective in our new economy post-pandemic or during the pandemic. So I'd like to make the suggestion of transitioning those dollars or a portion of those dollars into the Promise Program to make it more robust and getting it kicked off. Thank you.
So Mayor and Council, can I get some clarification too on the Mesa Promise Dollars? And maybe, I don't, I just want to make sure we're clear because I've heard it a couple of different times. Are these standalone dollars or are these intended to be matching dollars? Because I think part of this was trying to figure out the timing of when we needed to make these dollars available. And so if it's immediately, then that's one thing because they're direct benefit for the program or are, were they intended to be a match against fundraising for some time in the future? Because I think that's another consideration. And just to remind the council, remember the general fund, the one that's going to be under the most pressure economically when we start setting our budgets for the next year also.
You know, if I can make a suggestion, I think we ought to go forward with a motion today to fund these recommendations, but to, to not move forward on the human services dollars just for another week and then come back next Thursday so that we can have just a more thoughtful discussion about whether there are in fact, you know, $85,000, you know, give or take, that are going to food insecurity causes that we, that we know are going to be very clearly fundable, you know, through the Mesa Cares dollars. If we can have a, the Mesa College Promise Program is essentially a scholarship program at Mesa Community College. I mean, I think it's going to qualify for, for consideration. And there is still a lot of philanthropy that needs to be done to make, that's not going to be enough to fund the entire program. But I know there's a lot of people in the community, myself and members of this council included, that are going to be engaged in fundraising. And if we can show that the city has got us off to a good start, that would be great, particularly given, as Councilmember Duff indicated, probably the increased need for this program going forward. So could I entertain, Mr. Brady, did you see a problem with that? I see Mr. Luna's hands up, but at this point, I think I'd entertain a motion that we proceed forward with the CDVG funding and then just hit pause on the, the general fund money just for a week so we can not feel like we're rushing into a decision on that. Mr. Luna.
No, I agree with you, Mayor. So I'm going to make the motion that we move forward and, and to council to fund the CDVG programs as staff has recommended.
Thank you.
Mayor, can we just make sure that includes ESG and home?
I'm sorry, Mr. Brady, you broke up just a little bit. Could you say that again?
I think it was intended, but just to be clear, Mr. Luna, that that, just for the record, it's CDVG, home, and ESG?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Brady.
Thank you. Any, are there more comments on this? Yes, Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Michelle, you mentioned in your presentation about Love Your Neighborhood program. Is that correct? Part of the funding mechanism?
Yes, that is correct, Councilman.
And I, I don't, I just wanted to verify, do those dollars trickle down to our code compliance department? I know that they partnered with another agency for neighborhood cleanup programs and the funding went to the, for homelessness, but can we allocate some dollars? Are they going to get any dollars? Let me ask that question.
So Mayor, Vice Mayor, there wouldn't be dollars directly to services because remember, this is a project, so this is rehab. So it's to, I think what happens is neighborhood services with co-compliance identifies areas, neighborhoods, and then identifies properties that where they work with neighbors to do rehabs on dilapidated houses. So it's, it's not dollars that go directly to the co-compliance department, but it's part of the collaboration with them in identifying the need.
Yeah, I, I get that. I think that we need some clarification on that because they did partner with one of these organizations. And just, just for future discussion, I just want to make sure that they have monies to, because they reach out and clean up a lot of things from homelessness issues to obviously our neighborhood programs. And I guess for Natalie and Michelle, if that, if there's funding mechanisms to help them facilitate those type of programs.
Yeah.
And does that, does that come out of that 300,000?
No, Mayor, so Mayor and Vice Mayor, that has, because that's a service, it competes for that much smaller amount in the slide before where it says CDVG Public Services. And those are very difficult because it's a cap of 15%. So it, and most of those are then go directly, or as you can see, they're really focused on providing public services related to homeless and, and wraparound services to, or supportive services to the homeless. We're limited, we're capped on what we can do.
All right, well, we'll, we'll carry that conversation for the future, but I, I support the motion that's currently in proposed.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion before we vote on the motion? I know it was made by Mr. Luna, did I see a hand for a second of that motion? Thank you, Mr., I think, okay, we'll go with Mr. Freeman. If there's no further discussion, I think we need to do a roll call vote on the motion, so please unmute your microphone. I vote aye. Mr. Freeman?
Aye.
Mr. Whitaker?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Haredia?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Duff?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Luna.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, motion passes unanimously and we'll look forward to the further discussion of the human service, the general fund human services dollars to see if there might be some additional funding that can take place there. Excuse me, the next item on our agenda is 1B is to hear a presentation, discuss, and provide direction on an update on the Mesa Cares Program focusing on proposed future Cares Program funding.
Mayor and council, so on this program, as I mentioned just a few minutes ago, the good news for us is that yesterday afternoon, and I think a link was sent to you in the update, but we have received guidance for the coronavirus relief fund. It was dated April 22nd. And in that, there were, again, we just got this last, yesterday afternoon, but as council knows and I think will be presented to you today, we've been running down this path long before we received the funds and before we got this guidance. One of the areas that we felt confident, we felt, we've always felt confident that would be included in the relief fund eligibility was food security. So we wanted to, so it, and obvious, and that was confirmed in the guidance that we received that that is an eligible expense. It speaks about expenses for food delivery to residents and including senior citizens, vulnerable populations. So we are, we have been working very hard. We have, we're setting up teams for the different categories of needs that have been identified that Carrie and Natalie set up with the Mesa Cares Call Center. So today, we want to kind of bring you up to speed to kind of where we are with at least the food security. And then next week, we plan on coming to you with the Business Assistance Program, which is also one of the identified eligible uses. But I'm going to start, I think Carrie's going to start the presentation and then she's going to hand it off to Mark Hirschberg and we'll go from there.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Good morning, Mayor and Council. We're here today to share with you programs that we're developing as it relates to our highest priority needs in our community that could be funded with our federal Mesa Cares dollars. So on April 6th, as you recall, the city launched our Mesa Cares Program and conducted a community needs assessment of our Mesa residents, businesses, and visitors, and, and our nonprofits. So we continue receiving that feedback from our community to see if any of those priorities have shift. On April 14th, I came and presented to you the results from that community assessment and shared with you that we had thousands of residents who participated in that survey. And as you can see on this slide, access to food was the highest ranking priority. So now that we have this data, the city manager has asked Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities Department and the Fire and Medical Department to start rolling out programs immediately that build upon and address food security in our community. So now I'm going to turn it over to Mark Hirschberg, our Parks and Recreation and Community Facilities Director, who will share with you some ideas about our Mesa Cares Feeding Mesa Program. Mark?
Thank you, Carrie. Good morning, Mayor and Council. As Carrie mentioned, I want to specifically thank Amy Manis and Diane Seberg on my staff, Chief Camilli and Assistant Chief James Johnson for their assistance in helping us establish this program and get moving. We've been running nonstop for about the last seven days, trying to learn, educate ourselves, and get out in the community and talk about what the needs are and see where we can, where the city can assist and provide both human capital and, and standing up some of our nonprofits as well as the financial needs that are out there, as you all just previously discussed, of where we can assist in making sure food insecurity is addressed. So one of the first things we wanted to do based on the community needs assessment was establish a mission for the, for this Feeding Mesa Program. And so that's to address that highest priority need by providing nutritious food and meals to Mesa residents who've been affected by the COVID-19 and by partnering with those existing services, nonprofits, and Mesa-based restaurants to make that possible. The goals of the program, again, as I mentioned, a joint effort between the Parks, Recreation, and Community Facilities Department and Fire and Medical is to provide convenient nutritious ways for residents to obtain food, support Mesa nonprofits who have increased needs due to the impacts of COVID-19. If we can, keep Mesa-based restaurants open, and then repurpose city staff affected by facility closures to assist with this program. Some of the target demographics we identified are schoolchildren and families, the homeless, unemployed or underemployed, the nonprofit organizations, low-income families, and those that are homebound. So three programs that we've identified for consideration, and one, we're ready to launch immediately, two, we're still under development and trying to work through some details and, and finalize those. But the first one is citywide food distribution programs, and I'll go into that in more detail later on here. A restaurant, Restaurant Kitchen Buyout Program, which is still under development, and then a Mesa Cares Card Program, which is again, still under development. Addressing those programs that are still under development first, the food, the Restaurant Kitchen Food Buyout Program, this is, the goal would be to keep those base, to give additional businesses to those Mesa-based restaurants in provide, addressing that goal of providing meals for the community. This could be a supplement or an add-on to the Meals on Wheels Program, assisted living facilities, or food services for our frontline healthcare workers who can't leave the hospitals or the clinics. One of the next steps that we'll take is to determine the interest in restaurants and their availability, their capability to produce in, in mass, and then establishing some program requirements to make sure that the nutritional values are met for those receiving those meals. Also need to determine our transportation needs to move the food from the restaurants to the various distribution points. So again, we're continuing to work through those, this type of program and what that would look like, and we'll come back further with updates as we establish that. The Mesa Cares Card, this is a, the idea here is to create a branded Mesa Cares voucher card really that could be redeemed at select Mesa restaurants. And the cards would be distributed to eligible community members who are in need or hungry. And there's a vetting process already in place that we can explain further on as we talk about the food distribution. We'd work with the Chamber of Commerce to, and our Economic Development Department to identify those businesses who've been negatively impacted and where we can partner with them to help provide that. And then the idea here would be that the participating restaurants and businesses would, throughout the city, would create these Mesa Cares meal packages where the individual could then redeem, redeem this card. It would cover the cost of that meal package and then provide an immediate payment to the restaurant directly. So again, that's another program that's still under development, much like the Kitchen Buyout Program. So we'll continue to work through that process and establish that and then come back with additional updates as well. The one that we're ready to launch immediately is the Food Distribution Program. And as you all know, there's a strong network of nonprofits throughout the community, and the one thing we heard loud and clear is that let's not create duplicate services, let's work cooperatively to, to support each other and support those services that are already out there. So we've been working hard to establish those relationships with the various nonprofit food distribution, distribution organizations who have that increase, increased need for assistance with the distribution of food due to COVID-19. And that could be anywhere from, as I mentioned, early on, from their volunteers that typically do the meal packing or provide those distributions. They're down because it could be seniors that are homebound now due to the coronavirus and the stay-at-home orders. So can we send staff out to assist with actually doing those services for them? In some cases, it is a need for actual food, and I'll talk about that a little bit later on as well. To date, as you all are aware, we've already been assisting with the United Food Bank and helping them utilize the Convention Center parking lot on Thursdays for staging of the Help Yourself Friday event and for the, the actual distribution of that on Friday, Friday mornings. As the Vice Mayor alluded to earlier, United Food Bank was serving between 500 and 550 families pre-COVID, and that number has increased to over 2,300 families or is, when they multiply that out into individuals, that's about 10,000 individuals a week, and that number continues to go up. That program, we'd like to continue to partner with United Food Bank as that need, as I mentioned, is not declining but only growing and work on a long-term partnership through the end of August with them through a facility rental agreement. As it continues to warm up, much like we're experiencing this week, there's going to be a need for increased storage of those food items in a cool, in an air-conditioned location, and then a way to keep their volunteers and their recipients out of the, the heat if we can. So we'd like to explore and work with United Food Bank on utilizing the Convention Center more for those type of, to expand their opportunities and their event through the end of August. Additional food distribution centers, I'd just like to give a recognition to Dave Richens with United Food Bank, Mary Lee Baptiste with Midwest Food Bank, and Nancy Marion with House of Refuge, and Ruth Collins with Arizona Brain Food. These individuals have been instrumental in this last week of helping us understand the needs, understand the process, understand where we can help, and lending their expertise and their direction in helping guide us through this process of where we can come in and supplement the services they're providing, putting us in direct contact with their agency partners so we can reach out to them directly and find out what those needs are. And so we're working in partnership to do that, looking at those distribution sites. House of Refuge and Nancy are eager and willing to use that as a location to serve that part of the city. Our other nonprofits and faith-based organizations, as I mentioned, are, have various needs that we're, we're doing an intake process with, with them right now to find out what those true needs are and are ready to start deploying those as early as next week, hopefully. And then we want to make sure that we're representative across the entire city, so those geographic locations, we're mapping those to make sure that there's easy access to food for all areas and all members of the community regardless of location. Been working with those, with the food banks in particular to address the avail, and assess the availability of food and identify additional sources where food could be acquired from. And then we'll work directly with those nonprofit partners who already have an intake process. And the one qualifying question that is required by the USDA and Arizona DES to qualify for, to receive food under this program is, are you hungry? If the answer is yes, then food will be given to you. If the answer is yes, then food will be given to you. An additional distribution program, the Mesa Public Schools McKenna Vento Program, which serves their homeless student program. There's about 300 children that participate. They have a need for 300 additional snack packs a week. We've already put those wheels in motion between, to get, help them get that as early as this week, hopefully. So we'll continue to work with them and support them in any other needs that they may have as well. So some of the program expenses we're looking for, as the Vice Mayor mentioned, the availability of food is becoming harder for some of these agencies to come across, mainly as more people stay at home and go to the grocery stores to buy that food, it's leaving the shelves quicker. So the food is being redirected to the stores first as opposed to the food banks. When we talked to, to Dave Richens and the United Food Bank, he has a good flow of food coming in right now, but, and we think by offsetting and helping him with rent and storage of those facilities, that'll help him be able to continue to acquire food. But Midwest Food Bank is having trouble with non-perishable items. And they have the availability through, as the governor directed the National Guard to assist, the food banks are one of those areas where the National Guard is assisting. So they have the ability with those vehicles and those trucks to go to wherever the food source is, whether it's California, Nevada, Iowa, they've gone as far as way to Iowa to go and obtain food to bring back to Arizona to help serve their partner agencies. So to assist Midwest Food Bank with the 70-plus partner agencies that they work with in Mesa, if we can allocate $200,000 to them to go secure that, those non-perishable food items, they'll be able to provide food boxes well past the end of July. And then hopefully, if things calm down and school returns to normal, that'll allow those families to get back. And then when the school lunches and things start, that hopefully the need declines a little bit. So also, as I mentioned, on the Convention Center rental with United Food Bank, we're looking at approximately $30,000 per week in, in that rental agreement of what that could look like. And that number could go up as we work with Dave and his group to look at additional needs. If we can use the kitchen space there to help with produce and sorting fresh produce out to get it out to the community, there's a possibility there. And then he's running out of space for some of his cold storage trailers, so we think we can help him with that as well. The staffing costs to, to move the staff and help stand up some of these nonprofits is approximately $52,000 per week. And then transportation and delivery costs, as these programs continue to develop, will continue to be sorted out and to, are to be determined as we determine the different projects and programs of how we need to move food around throughout the community. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, going back to the, to the Cares Card, I'm not necessarily sure that it's a great idea that we get, that we start getting into providing meal cards, I guess, for folks and trying to figure out who's, you know, vetting out who's eligible, who's not eligible, and then picking restaurants and so forth. You know, I think the federal government does a pretty good job of that, as, as does the state with WIC. And so I would rather we fund food programs versus just giving out cards and then having staff or someone be, be the vetter, I guess, of, of who's eligible and who's not eligible. I just, I see that there could be, just be misuse of, of these cards. And I would prefer to leave the, the WIC programs up to the federal and state government and not get us into, into that type of program, but rather use the funds instead to, to fund the nonprofits that have a, a better grasp and a better hold on, on what, what our community needs as far as food programs and so forth. So that, that's all. I, I'm just concerned that, that there's no real oversight of that, of the Cares Card.
Mayor, Councilman Thompson, and those are really good points. I think our, and that's why it's still been under development. I think our intention here is to meet two goals first, to help those who are hungry. And second, we were trying to figure out how to use this program to support local restaurants. And granted, there could be some challenges in there, but those were our two main objectives, to help the hungry and to, and to direct resources to local restaurants. So that's what we're trying to achieve here. This, maybe this isn't the best way. We know there's been some communities have had and out vouchers to encourage people to go eat in their communities. So that, that was the intention here.
Yeah, I would just make, want to make sure that there's further vetting on this program if it's going to be rolled out. I just, I just see that it could be misused in so many ways, and again, we're not the, we're not probably the most qualified to manage a WIC-type program. So just caution to the wind there.
Mr. Luna?
You know, I think this is a great program to help our restaurants. We have so many struggling restaurants throughout the city of Mesa. They want to continue to provide meals to people. Having a, a vehicle to allow people, individuals that are hungry or want a meal, and to be able to go to a restaurant and to get some food is a great way of doing that. Not everybody can go to the thing on Friday, but there are a lot of, there are poor working families or many families that don't have access to that. If they have a restaurant nearby, are able to get a card, this would give them an opportunity to at least feed their family for the moment. And, but it also supports our restaurants. Many of our restaurants are really, really suffering right now. So the, the fact that we're going to have a card that will allow our restaurants to provide meals to our community is a great way of supporting our, our businesses in our community. So I think it's a great idea. Looks like you're going to be using the vetting process used by MPS, which I'm sure is those students that qualify for Title I. This is a great use of, of a resource or a program that will allow many families to, to get food.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Yes, let's go with Ms. Duff and then Mr. Whitaker.
Well, I'm in support of using the restaurants, but is the card, will they be able to use it on open menu, or will it be for meal packs that are qualified to be used that are, you know, nutritionally rounded out and at a good value? I think it's a great way to employ our restaurants to make meal packs, especially at our grocery stores where I noticed, I've seen logs and such, that people complain that there's a shortage of WIC-approved foods. Grocery stores often don't have a lot of the basic foods and make the dollars stretch. And using our restaurants for employment, which might be some of the same people anyway, you know, who are working at the restaurants, but I didn't know if it was for an open menu or maybe just meal packs that are nutritionally and approved as well as provide, you know, a family-sized portions or of meals that, you know, that you're not getting the lobster. You're, you're maybe getting a pasta dinner, and you can really make those dollars stretch.
Mayor, Councilmember Duff, thank you. You are exactly right on, on the package. It would be, that's how we envisioned rolling that out. It would be for a set dollar amount that we've agreed upon with all of these restaurants, whatever that looks like. It would feed a family of four. If you're a family of three, then maybe, or two, then you have leftovers for, to get you through another couple of meals is the idea there. But yes, it would be nutritionally based for a specific package, could only be redeemed for that. They would, you know, scan the card or turn the card back in. Again, those are all items that we're vetting, but then they would receive that payment for that, the value of that pack, that Mesa Cares package, meal package.
That's great, and that is perfect. I've heard of other restaurants doing this across the nation to fill voids in the Meals on Wheels and other programs where there isn't enough food preparation. And then we have these restaurants that are very skilled and very good at taking ingredients and making them stretch and being nutritionally balanced for people. So I'm, I, I commend you for using the restaurants and using them wisely. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whitaker and then Mr. Heredia.
Yeah, so I just want to comment on this specific issue, and my concern is much like Kevin's, my concern would be the oversight of this program and, you know, how we exactly plan on managing that. And I hear what Mark is saying, that, you know, these would be packages that are, that are bought and sold, which makes me feel a little more comfort, comfortable, because I think going out to a restaurant is a, is a creature comfort, right? This isn't, we had 20, we had over 26 million people who have filed for unemployment in the last few weeks. I think we need to take care of the core food needs, which would mean give out packages to grocery stores so that they can go buy the fundamental things that they need to survive, not, not going out to a restaurant to get prepared food. It's just, it doesn't seem to me like the wisest use of the money. So, you know, to, to have that inflated cost of food, I, I don't know that that, from my perspective, is going to be the best, the best spent money of this Cares money that we're going to receive. In addition to that, Mark, you had indicated that Midwest is having problems. I didn't really understand what you were saying. Are they having supply chain problems, or what exactly are they having issues with over at Midwest? Can you clarify that?
Yes, Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker. The non-perishable food items, the canned fruit, the canned vegetables, the Chef Boy R.D., lasagna and spaghetti and meatballs, those type of things are, are being redirected because they can't keep them on the grocery store shelves long enough, so that supply is going directly to the grocery stores as opposed to the shelf life as it nears the end of its life, it gets donated to the food banks. Now it's not staying, it's not staying on the shelf long enough in the grocery stores, so they keep, the suppliers have to keep restocking grocery stores as opposed to diverting to the food banks. So they are now in a need to go out and purchase those items directly from their suppliers.
I got you. And have we researched the supply chain to know is, do the suppliers of those types of food believe that this is going to be a, a longer-term issue, or do they believe that it just needs time to catch up with this spike of demand that occurred recently?
I personally have not researched that, other than, than what we all hear in the news and talking with the food banks, that, and Vice Mayor alluded to this, with some of these plants shutting down recently in Iowa, there is one that shut down yesterday. It's slowing that, that chain down, but they're, they see this, the need for food continuing well into the future for these families. They don't see that dissipating. And if people start to return to work, does that slow down and, and the, the demand in the grocery stores? I think that's a to-be-determined, and, and we haven't researched that directly. In all honesty, I've just been trying to wrap my hands around how food distribution in a community of this size works in general in the last seven days.
No, I totally understand, Mark. And, and let me be clear, I, I commend what staff has done, and I, and I appreciate the fact that this phase of the program we're rolling out so quickly, because, like I said, with the unemployment numbers where they are, I think it's critical that something like food isn't going to be an issue in our community. So I completely appreciate what you guys are doing from that perspective, and again, I commend you guys for rolling this out so quickly. Thanks, Mark.
And Mayor, if I may, Councilmember Whitaker, to that point, I do want to point out that the different, the funding sources and the donation sources for the United Food Bank and Midwest Food Bank are different. So that's why there's a need for the non-perishable to be purchased for Midwest, but not necessarily that need existing yet for United Food Bank. Because of their suppliers and the way they receive their donations and their funding, that's the difference there of that immediate request for funding.
And to be clear, in this program, you're saying that we are allocating funds then to help Midwest restock this food, or be, I guess, buy it retail rather than waiting for it to get close to expiration from a grocery store and then getting it donated? Am I understanding you correctly?
Mayor, Councilmember, you're correct.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
And to that point, we'll, we'll continue to work with the United Food Bank, and if should that need continue to arise, we'll come back with a, a funding request to assist them too, as well as Arizona Brain Food, or any of those groups that you just discussed during Michelle's presentation as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Heredia and then Ms. Duff, and I know that we have additional comments as well.
Yeah, a couple of questions on the Mesa Cares Card. You know, I just want to thank staff to, and thinking creatively of these, these approaches, because I think folks need a variety of different ways to get food, right? Not everybody ha, will have access to, to get food boxes or, or, you know, go in a specific day or time. And so having creative ways of how people can still get fed, I think is important. On the Mesa Cares Card, as we evaluate the process, I think it's, it's going to be important, what's the intake and what's the tracking and getting information from restaurants and, and looking at that information, information, seeing if that is working to, you know, prolong that program. I would say setting up that infrastructure is going to be important, but also working with other, other chambers of commerce as well, the East Valley Hispanic Chamber, the Asian Chamber, and, and other members, other, other business entities to get a holistic list of restaurants, I think will be important as we evaluate this program. So I, just one recommendation I have on that end. My, my other two questions is on, you mentioned a school program that works with the homeless. Is there a larger program being worked with schools? I know some schools had to, I think they're doing Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Some other schools have to reduce that. I know there is, you know, schools all over the city, so that distribution center might be of, of interest, and how do we, how do we spread out that, that work with, with our school districts across the city? So that's one question. And then the coordination between the food banks, I, I know each, each one has different territories, but Midwest and, and United, how, is there, how's the talk around the duplication effort, or limiting the duplication of efforts, or, or just better, the coordination of them? I, I know, I, I'm not as aware of how they coordinate, but, but just wanted to ask to reach more people on that end, how's that coordination going?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember Heredia. School districts first. So yes, we have been in touch with Mesa Public Schools on their various food programs and their distribution programs. In regards to their transition to the junior highs, they are confident that that is, is working and addressing the, the true need out there for the community, and because typically there's three elementary schools or so that feed into a junior high, and they're all within that relatively easy travel distance. They don't, they, they think that program is working okay, but we'll continue to communicate and work with them should that need arise. We've already started the discussions with them regarding the summer meal program that they typically provide and that we host cooperatively at our campsites. And with facilities continually closed, currently closed, and as we continue to evaluate those and what those look like, moving month by month here, we will continue to work with them and evaluate what that looks like and stand up additional sites with them should that be needed as well. So we'll continue to work with Mesa Public Schools and reach out to Higley and Queen Creek as well, and Gilbert, to make sure that we are addressing all of those programs and, and offering our assistance any way we can to help those school programs. In terms of duplication of the food banks and where those agency partners, they look like, both Dave and Mary Lee have been great to work with. They've given us both of their partner lists directly and all of their contacts. So we've laid that all out on a spreadsheet and a map and have them all geographically located. And we have started yesterday afternoon, we just got that information from them yesterday morning, or Wednesday afternoon, or what day were we, Thursday? Tuesday afternoon, Wednesday morning. So we have started making phone calls. We have about 25 staff reaching out directly to each of those organizations, making personal phone calls and connections with them, asking a series of questions, much like we've talked before with the intake. We're doing the same thing with these agencies and evaluating exactly what days of the week they provide services, what type of services they provide, what their current staffing level looks like. And then the most important question we're asking, if you had more resources coming your way, whether it be in terms of bodies to help or food, what could your output look like, and how many more people could you serve? And that's what we're really trying to get to, so then we can go back to the food banks and say, okay, here's the additional need with our support, here's where, how many more people in the community we need with our support. Here's where, how many more people in the community we can, we can serve. So to that point, the duplication, there's only about, on that list of about 80 different agencies, 85 agencies, there's about 20 that receive food boxes from both Midwest and United, and we'll work with them directly to make sure there's no duplication and no more need, or not receiving anything extra that is being utilized correctly.
Okay, thank you. I think Ms. Duff and then Mr. Luna.
Thank you. One thing that I've been reading and hearing about is our food chains. Been learning a lot about that. So we basically have two food chains from the farms and such that goes to the grocery stores. And in those chains, there's actually shortages. And in another food chain, that, those supply chains go to restaurants. And in those supply chains, there are surpluses, and they're dumping food and milk and eggs and just by the millions of gallons and acres and everything. So that surplus has gone to the restaurants, is having a hard time to find the transition, or is it even cost effective even to get it to the food banks because they have to process it? It's maybe better just to dump it and be done and walk away from it. But because of that, they anticipate that because of that food chain, that a lot of farmers won't be replanting, and they will be downscaling and not doing as much in food production. So long term, there could be some food shortages and create some inflation on food because of the mass surplus in this area. So by employing these restaurants, we're being able to have an avenue for the, a lot of the supply chain to go back into business and get it into the restaurants, and therefore keeping our food chain healthier, so that we don't suffer the scale back and the pullback of, you know, of not seeing the demand and the need and not planting. So I think it's important to keep our restaurants in business as much as we can in a smart way that is cost effective to feed our families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Luna.
I think Councilmember Duff and I have been reading the same articles. One of the things I wanted to ask, and maybe with the assistance of Vice Mayor Freeman, we have a lot of local farmers that produce a number, you know, they produce fruits and vegetables locally. We also, they also produce milk locally. I'm wondering, Mark, are you reaching out to them? Are you working with the United Food Bank and with Midwest to try to make sure that we can partner with some of our local farmers to assist in providing food for those individuals that really need it?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Luna. I know this might be a sidebar conversation. However, Councilmember Duff, our farms today, we're very adaptable. And so we plant and replant. And the farmers are not changing really the methods of what they're planting because the, still, the need is there. There's just a hiccup in the COVID. And obviously, like you mentioned, some of the produce is not getting to the restaurants. However, they may not grow as much as they typically do, so they reduce their acreage and their planting. And therefore, keeping the supply will never be a problem, especially for Arizona. I'm currently working with United Food Bank on another board that I belong with to provide fresh produce directly to the food banks. In fact, we have a Zoom meeting with Dave Richens and another organization, I believe tomorrow, to discuss that. But the farms will still be planting. We're finishing up citrus and a lot of our fresh vegetables today in Arizona, or this month, and then they'll set fallow. Well, production will still continue this day till July, and then they'll start the machine, and they'll be replanting in August and September. Councilmember Luna, does that help your question?
Yes, absolutely. I appreciate that you're working to try to, to try to provide supplies to United Food Bank. I think it's essential that we support our local farmers, and because they're suffering too. We want to make sure that what they produce is eaten by our community members that really need their food. So, so thank you for working with them. And I think this would be, that's good information for Mr. Hirschberg as well. So he understands there's that collaboration. We want to make sure that we get food to the right people when they need it most.
Mayor, if I may, real quick, Mayor, Councilmember, Vice Mayor, the, that I think is an important piece of this, utilizing the convention center too, because the biggest need right now for both food banks is that cold storage and that sorting capability for that produce and citrus. And how do you get it out the door quickly? So I think that's another advantage to utilizing the convention center for this process. We have some cold storage there, and then it's already a known distribution site. So if we can, if there's a need to increase that distribution of those produces and citrus directly, because there's a quick turnaround on that, you can't store it too long as it comes to the food banks. So Dave and I have had that conversation as well of looking at that, along with Midwest also, and really moving food. And that's one of the things, as we've done our intake initially, as I was looking at the forums the last night, was one of the big requests that people had was that need for fresh produce. So we're, we'll focus on that as well as we continue to stand these up the rest of this weekend to next week and see what we can do on that process as well.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mark Hirschberg. Yeah, we're going to hit our, our dairyman are not, it's really an unfortunate situation. This is the most productive time for cows to produce milk, yet the consumption of milk has dropped. And also making cheese in the valley has dropped 60% from the cheese manufacturers here in the valley. A lot of milk is not being utilized to its best potential. The tanks are full, so to speak. The cows are flushed, they're producing lots of milk. This is our highest leveraging for alfalfa. And this is the time they make a lot of milk. With that said, we're hitting our stride on our fresh vegetables in the Salt River Valley. You'll find in May, June and July, we're hitting our, top of our peak, and then it'll drop in August and then replanting late August and September. Mark, going back, I wanted to go back to the Mesa Carers card. I just think that there's, I'm struggling with a little bit. Do some more vetting on it to make sure that, you know, I, you know, if you give somebody a card, are they going to utilize it for the right purpose? I guess if you have select restaurants, I get that. And not other franchised restaurants or something. We're looking at kind of a fire attack in two different directions, providing food for families and employment and for restaurants. I get that. I wish there was some other way we could let people have a card and have us not be involved with that. It's just one of my thoughts on that. But I'd like to just see how you vet it out and what package you come up with. I think I'm done, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think my comments are similar to what has already been expressed. I, my compliments to the city staff, we're really, I think we're attacking a lot of birds with one stone here. Some of our priorities that this council has previously expressed is homeless prevention. And I think when these federal guidelines came out yesterday, I had a quick conversation with Mr. Brady about it and whether or not they allowed for us to, to really, you know, target some of the areas that we were most concerned with. And it's food security, you know, it seems like it's clearly something that's appropriate ways to help small businesses with utility payments and other things. I don't, that's for a future presentation. But the priority that we have to try to prevent homelessness, that seems a little more difficult. Because I know we talked about how we can somehow help folks with rent vouchers or otherwise, you know, prevent evictions and people, you know, being on the street, finding ways to get money to this, to the at-risk, at-risk of becoming homeless population, I think is going to be a challenge in how we administer these funds. So the food, this Feeding Mesa program, I think might be one way we can do that. Again, it helps us with the food insecurity issue that was identified as the most pressing issue with all of the polling that we did. It does allow us to direct funds towards struggling small Mesa businesses. And it does allow us to target these folks and individuals and families that are at risk for homelessness. I understand that maybe the initial reaction is to cringe when we hear about cards and the potential for abuse there. But I think that we can't shy away from that because it, we've got to try to figure out how, the best way we can build protections into that and have it be a program that we minimize the potential for abuse. But still, I think the upside of going forward with this is certainly worth exploring. So again, my compliments to staff. I look forward to, Mr. Brady, I assume that in future days and weeks, we'll get additional updates on Mesa Carers as it's going to be implemented to help the small business community and to try to prevent homelessness. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. So I think we're, as you said it, Mayor, we're quoting you every day, or maybe it's every hour now. We're building this plane as we're going along. So we have meetings today, and our hope is to come back next Thursday, a week from today, and begin to roll out to you the concept, get your feedback on our Small Business Assistance Program. Again, we just got the guidelines, so we're meeting right after this meeting, or today, to have further discussions and figure out how that applies to small business. So that's one of the programs. We've got the food security, the small business program that we're rolling out. We want to look at how we can, there is provision that allows us to look at providing additional support for homeless populations. So that's something we may want to look at. We do want us to look at how we can help, if there's a possibility. This may take a little bit longer to work on, but how to help households that have been impacted economically because of COVID. It's not as explicit as the others. But we're going to have some conversations about the need for sanitary infrastructure to homes, whether it's water, whether it's garbage pickup, how important those are. If there's households that are not able to make those payments, we're hoping to be able to find a way to be able to support those households. So those, that's what's coming. That's what we're working on right now. Public safety, of course, is covered in this. The, all the equipment, the mask, all those logistics and their efforts are covered under this funding source also.
Yes, Mr. Freeman.
Chris, along that point, thank you. Now, I read this in the paper about the liquid accounts in our city, both water, gas, electric. Can any of these Mesa Care funds help cover any of these COVID-related?
Yeah, or Vice Mayor, that's the one that we're, we're working on. We may seek further clarification. We, there's some language in here that is more explicit about what's eligible, and then there's some that kind of are broader. We're going to work on that with our city attorney's office. What we're doing now is rolling out programs that are were explicitly identified, because we feel like we have safe harbor and moving forward with those. And so that's why you hear food security, where you hear small business. The others, specifically to household assistance on utilities, we're not, not going to do that, but we just want to make sure we're, first of all, the logistics is setting up that is pretty daunting, working with our nonprofits. But we want to make sure as we roll it out, we do it in a way that justifies the eligibility to provide for the health and safety from the virus, that we can justify that in our assistance with utilities. We think we can, but we want to make sure we establish the reasoning, the logic for that well ahead of time before we start spending money.
Thank you. All right, thank you. I know this, this item, Council, any additional questions or comments on this item? Again, this is, I'm sure will occupy the majority of our attention for the next, for the foreseeable future. So we'll hear a lot more about Mesa Carers and about Feeding Mesa as these programs are fleshed out. This is agendized as an action item, but I think it was just to provide direction. I don't think-
That's correct, Mayor.
If there's any need for a vote on anything that was presented today, do you agree with me, Mr. Smith and Mr. Brady?
Yes, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then the next item on our agenda for this meeting is a current event summary, including meetings and conferences attended. I know in our own way, we've continued to be very active, Council. What'd you have to share with us? Mr. Luna?
Mayor, I'm going to give you a summary of activities that are going to take place. This afternoon, Councilmember Heredia and I will host a Spanish summit on the current state of our education here in the city of Mesa. Log on to Facebook in Espanol. It will be a Spanish presentation starting at 2:00 PM today. We, I do have a planned Hilo Board Meeting tomorrow. We're going to meet with many of our board members to talk about issues related to COVID-19, because that's really important that we all stay in touch. Also, something that I'm very excited about, I'm working with Natasha Karachi, and we are working on the Falcon Business Alliance webinar next week on Thursday, April 30. If you want more information, you can look at it on my Facebook page or log on to falconbusinessalliance.com. Very excited, we're going to have Bill Jopginiac along with Jay O'Donnell, as well as Sally Harrison from Mesa Chamber of Commerce, to talk to small businesses, actually all kinds of businesses in the Falcon District, to see how we can support them in their efforts as they work through the COVID virus as well. And then this Saturday, there is going to be an emergency blood drive happening at the Civil Air Patrol over at Falcon Field at between 9:00 and 2:00 PM. So if you'd like to donate blood, please come to the Civil Air Patrol over at Falcon Field between 9:00 and 2:00 on this Saturday. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. And thanks to you and Frankie for doing the digital summit this week in Spanish. I think that's, that'll be very much appreciated by many in our community. So thank you for doing that. And we'll look forward to doing another digital summit through the mayor's office in the near future, hopefully a week from now, when we have more details on the small business assistance that we can provide through the Mesa Carers program. Council, any other comments under this agenda item? Yes, Jen?
I just wanted to take a moment to recognize tomorrow is National Arbor Day, and to go out there and give a tree a hug, or plant a tree, and recognize the benefit of trees in our neighborhoods, in our city, and what they provide. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, other comments? All right, the next item on our agenda is hearing from Mr. Brady about the scheduling of future meetings. Mr. Brady?
Thank you, Mayor. We will reconvene again a week from today, next Thursday, and we'll see you that Thursday morning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes the items on our agenda. If you could please unmute your microphones and someone make a motion to adjourn, and we'll wrap this up. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.